I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So we are reconvening our meeting and moving to a strategic plan update. And so I am pleased to hand the reins over to Superintendent Hawkins.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Good evening, everyone. I just want to, if they can't see on TV, our cabinet team is sitting over here. And they really get the credit for the work that we do within the strategic plan. So I just want to make sure I say thank you to all of you for everything you've done this year to work to meet all of our priority initiative goals. So thanks for that. As you know, in the past, we go through our priority initiatives three times a year to report out to the community to show the progress that we're making on those goals throughout the school year. And so this is our final report out for this school year. It's also our final report out for our strategic, our five-year strategic plan, which became six-year strategic plan. And then the exciting thing about tonight is we are going to physically show you the final draft of our new strategic plan for the next five years moving forward. So a very exciting night for us, for sure. The one thing that I will say is, we feel as a cabinet team that we've really done a good job of bringing a lot of these topics to our ed programs meetings once a month, so that you can hear in-depth from the people that are actually doing that work and see all the progress that we're making. And so we hope to continue that moving forward, just to stay in the know about things that are actually happening in the district as the school year goes on. As you know, this is our key to whether we've completed a task, whether it's operational, significant progress, steady progress, some progress, or sometimes we do a priority initiative and then it gets canceled. So again, I'm going to go through and summarize our priority initiatives, because a lot of these we had already completed before we got to the last report out. But again, we're going to just go through and review each one individually. So if we start with under the category of student achievement and development, the first one was really talking about implementing a multi-tiered engagement attendance plan to reduce barriers. And as we know, chronic absenteeism has been a barrier or an issue for our district and most other districts across the nation since COVID. And so this work is still going to continue. When you see our new strategic plan, you're going to see that that's a real focus for us moving forward. But I think it's really important to note that we've had ongoing work to implement tier-two and tier-three attendance interventions. And a lot of that work starts with Shirley and her team with Carlos Pittman. But really, that work goes down to the building level. And they are working with families. They're, you know, trying to connect with them, seeing how we can get transportation, and then obviously working out plans to help and support those families the best that we can to get our kids to school, because we know that without them coming to school, it's really hard for them to meet their student achievement goals. If we go to number two, this one has also made significant progress. And this is strengthening our multi-tiered system of support. Some of you might know that as our MTSS system. And really, it looks at how do we offer professional development to strengthen our practices within the classroom. And so some of the new pieces of this, since our last report out, is instructional coaches have really worked to support our collaborative learning communities. And one thing that you're going to hear us call those our CLCs. So in the past, we called those PLCs. Now we're calling them CLCs. And they do very similar work. And our schools have really worked with our instructional coaches to help those learning gaps and, you know, incorporate those tier-one, two, and three interventions. Another big piece that we did this year was K-2 teachers were introduced to the structured literacy pathway in HMH, which is our new elementary language arts curriculum. And really, it helped to get those aligned to the science of reading, which we're hearing from the state. And those are all things that we've been doing for a long, long time. It's really nothing new in the district, but really just giving that terminology around that for our K through 2 teaching staff. And then another great piece of this is our elementary specialist teachers have really worked on their essential standards and deconstruction of the standards and align those with their curriculum resources. So sometimes when we're doing some of that work around standards, you know, we need to make sure that we're still doing that with our art, music, and physical education staff as well. If we move to number three, this one is operational, which we're excited about. This talks about the expanded career paths. And we've talked a lot about that throughout the year with our Vertex initiative. And, you know, we went from having six career paths. Now we have 13 available. At our D-Silt meeting today, Mark Burns and David Muller did a great job of going into depth about our Vertex initiative. And then also, within the Vertex initiative, we worked on having some different connections within some of our subgroups. And so we had a Marshallese evening that really talked about what our pathways look like. And then Shirley and Mimi and their teams put together a Spanish-speaking students and families on April 10th, which again, had great success and a great turnout. So I appreciate that. Number four, this is also operational. Plan and develop a ninth-grade seminar course that's based on best practices, really for that transition from eighth to ninth grade. This is happening in the fall. Students are signed up and registered. It's going to be an elective. And so we're really excited to see how we can kick that off so that our students in ninth grade get off to a good start and are ready to go and continue on the path for graduation. Number five, we talked about providing research-based professional development to enhance teacher effectiveness through, you know, really reinforcing that optimal learning environment and how do we make students feel like they belong in the classroom. And so there's been lots of different things done throughout the school year. But as of late, we did some solution tree workshop with our elementary, middle, and high school principals, instructional coaches, special education instructional coaches, district leadership team. Who am I forgetting, you guys? Anybody else? That's pretty much everybody, right? And really, talking about behavior solutions. And most people that were at that professional development came back and said, wow, that was some of the best professional development we've had as a district. And so this year, we're really excited to announce that we will continue that training and more professional development for all of our pre-K to 12 staff. So we haven't done professional development pre-K to 12 for quite a while. We usually separate that out. So we're excited for that to happen in August for the district. Number six, this is completed. And this is really about extracurricular activities. And how do we look at exploring esports? And when we meet next week in ed programs, Colby and Joe are actually going to come and talk a little bit more in detail about our esports program that we're going to introduce in the fall. But they've been working closely with community groups and trying to really secure the funding for the esports opportunity, because we know we have students that would be engaged in that and are excited. There's the esports. Dubu esports league. And we know a lot of our students already attend that. And so bringing that to our schools, hopefully, will be able to give more students an opportunity for that. Another piece that I just want to emphasize in this category about extracurricular is really the increase we've had around robotics. This year, we increased our first Lego League teams to six. We had four at the elementary level and two at the middle school level. There was also an increase in our first tech challenge robotic teams to four. We had one at Jefferson, one at Washington, and two at Roosevelt. And then probably one of our most exciting thing is the district's first robotic challenge team, which is at the high school level, they were able to make it to Worlds. And that was in Houston this year. Julie was able to accompany them and had great success in representing our district at the World Competition. So Julie, thanks for your work in moving that forward. Number seven, under student achievement, is to review and enhance our behavior programming supports, continue to have a safe learning environment for students and staff, and while we align that with the new laws that came about in the legislative session. And so new things this spring is really around Hempstead and Audubon. They've been piloting a new threat assessment, some features, that they've said, can't the whole district go to these? These are working really well. And so we actually, this morning, Mimi, Mark and I and Brenda had a meeting with our secondary folks about what that's going to look like moving forward and how that will help support their work when we have a threat at one of our schools. And then again, just repeating about the behavior solutions and ways that we can have best practices to implement behavior strategies at all of our levels. Then lastly, under student achievement and development, this is a checkmark. And this is to develop a plan to enhance transitional services for students eligible for special education and to meet their post-secondary expectations in the area of living, learning, and working. And so Brenda and her team had put together a plan that was accepted by the state, which is wonderful. And that plan is a span for three years, so that is started. And so she's continuing to do professional development around that transition. And then we'll continue that work moving on to the next school year. So that's exciting stuff. Any questions around student achievement and development? Okay, we'll keep going. The next category is community engagement. And for the first one, this is, we've made this one to be operational, to develop a plan for parent and family support series. And that really was led by Shirley and Mimi. They both did some different things to support our families on topics that are impacting their own kids at home. And so we did suicide prevention. We did hidden in plain sight, which was very interesting to me as well. And then we've done some things around the career and technology connections with our Marshallese community and Spanish-speaking communities. So I appreciate their work with that. And we plan to continue that again, moving forward, because again, reaching out and connecting with families is a priority of ours. The other thing the district did was we expanded our outreach efforts. We had presence at Unity Point Health Bike Rodeo, yay? And with the Walk and Bike to School Day. So trying to get some more connections within our community to help grow that awareness. And as you know, we have that community bus that we've been taking out. And everybody likes to see the new bus. And as we get going for this year with registration and recruitment for staff, that'll be something that you'll see out in the community quite frequently. So any questions? Oh, no, sorry, that was just not that one, I apologize. Number 10, expand efforts to engage broadly across the community through expanded outreach, community partnerships, and enhance our communication tools. And so this piece has made significant progress. As you know, one of our main communication tools is Parent Square. And so we've been testing different features in Parent Square that will enhance our communication with our families. And so we're excited that some of those new enhancements will be ready to be kicked off in the fall. So I appreciate Mike and Colby and their teams for working on those features and trying to find, every year, we're trying to find better and more efficient ways to communicate with our families, because we don't want our families to ever not want to look at our communications, right? So new and exciting ways. Number 11 is to create a central registration process to reduce barriers and streamline registration for families. This we've moved to operational. As you know, we hired an enrollment specialist for the district. And she has just been working like crazy to really mainstream a lot of our registration processes that we've had. And so that registration will really come from the district office, which will be easier on our families who have multiple students registering in our district. Our preschool enrollment went really well. That was completely online for the first time. So as you remember, people were not waiting outside at midnight trying to get a spot at preschool. We moved that right to online, so that was a big success. And our kindergarten registration also moved to online this year. So online enrollment has also been launched for all of our, rest of our students, first through 12th grade. So we're excited about that and excited to see where that takes us in the future moving forward. Because as you know, enrollment is going to be a key piece for us and this community with the introductions of vouchers. So we need to really make sure that we're out there, we're finding families, and that families know how to have access to us to get enrolled in our schools. Number 12 is to continue to enhance school business partnerships in the post-COVID landscape. And so this is really operational. Schools are continuing to strengthen their relationships with community partners. You know, this year, we've done a lot of work with gathering who are our community partners and making sure that those community partners are recognized in a way that they should. And then also, develop, we gave some training to our building leadership teams to how they can go out and find community partners. And then how do we sustain those community partners and use them in a really effective ways in our schools? Joe and Mike have been working on a plan to develop a new sponsorship program for our athletic activities, because we know that there's some opportunities on some of our athletic playing fields to expand some partnership and get some people some advertisement space for supporting our schools. And then district-wide business partner gatherings are being scheduled now and they'll be, and throughout the 24, 25 school years. So we're really focusing on ways that we can recognize those business partners and bring them to our events as well. And a lot of our schools do that already. They, you know, they bring them in for different events and activities. But we're going to try to be more purposeful with that. Any questions with community engagement? The next piece is effective resource management. And so if we look at number 13, complete a facility enhancement and development of a preschool center on Chavanel. As you know, I don't know if anybody's driven on Siple Road, but if you haven't, take a drive there. The playground is up, the track is around. It looks wonderful. It's really bright colors and very visible from Siple Road, which is exciting. So that is making significant progress. I know Brenda and Lisa, we're just out there yesterday doing a tour. And they're starting to see color and walls and all the good stuff, which is exciting. So we are, that will open in the fall. And then we're also planning in September to have a ribbon cutting of that facility. And we're going to team that up with an ed programs meeting so that we can, you can be there for the ribbon cutting. And then we'll just have our meeting out at that facility that evening, so you can take a tour and things like that. So we're excited about the opening of that space. Number 14, continue facility planning and outreach around the bond referendum. Well, as you know, that was completed. Unfortunately, that did not pass. But I do think that we had so many people that put a lot of time and energy into that bond referendum. It's the first time the district has ever done one that we are aware of, you know? And so knowing that, we've learned a lot. We continue to analyze that data. And then as we look at making our 10-year facility plan coming up in the fall, that'll be a conversation that we'll have about what are our next steps as a district as far as a bond and what does that look like? But again, I just thank everybody in this room for all of your time and energy and effort that went into that. We were so close. It was just very disappointing to be that close and not get that completed. And then number 15, develop the ability to add statewide allowed virtual learning days due to inclement weather. And as we know, we did that this year. We will have two virtual days that were very successful. We, our staff was very much engaged. Our students were engaged, which was even more exciting, with their one-to-one devices and then the elementary schools with their differentiated packets. So we are making some changes to our virtual learning day plan for staff moving forward for next year. And so we're excited to make that announcement by the end of the week, so they know kind of our plans moving forward. Because like anything, we took feedback. And as people gave us feedback, we made some adjustments to hopefully make those days even more successful for our district. Any questions around employee or around effective resource management? And then our last category that we report out on is employee excellence. And so an employee excellence for number 16, that has really become operational to enhance the district's employee onboarding process. And then emphasis on paraprofessional support. I think that Brenda and her team really saw that we were hiring paraprofessionals on a regular basis. And so how can we better support paraprofessionals as they enter our district to give them the training to work with our students of all different ability levels? And so that has made for a successful addition to our district. And then as always, Brian and his team continue to look at ways that we can onboard our staff in efficient ways, but yet get them the training and the things they need so that they're ready to go once they hit our buildings and are working with our kids. Number 17, continue to strengthen and enhance employee recruitment and retention efforts. You know, we want to be the employer of choice when we talk about school districts and other facilities in the Dubuque area. So this is really making significant progress. We continue to, you know, participate in job fairs, go to recruitment events. We're adding an increase in advertising presence for open positions. And then really working on how do we enhance our visuals and marketing and promotional materials this summer so that we can make sure that we're still recruiting the best of the best. And I know we've been actively hiring for some positions that were left vacant for us at the end of the school year. And so we've been making really good progress on some of those positions. You know, I look at CTE, which is a position, which are areas that have been really hard for the district to hire in the last couple of years. And we've hired two this spring, which is fantastic, because that's an area that we're obviously looking for growth from our student pop, from our students to take those courses. So we need staff to be in those jobs so we can continue pushing and increasing those numbers and enrollment numbers. And then lastly, explore and enhance the district-supported staff wellness initiatives. And I think, you know, we've really done some things this year. You know, we had our first ever pickleball event. You'd think we probably could have done it in about six gyms and it wouldn't have been full. So really talking about how do we enhance those for next year? Get those started at the beginning of the year and be ready to go so that we can do those things on a more frequent schedule, just like we do our trivia nights. We opened up our weight room, our schools for walking, and some of those facilities so that people can use those at no cost to them instead of getting a gym membership or something. So those are all just benefits of working for us in the district, which again, hopefully makes us an employer of choice. So any questions around employee excellence? Okay, so now I just want to take a few minutes to talk a little bit about our former plan, okay? So everybody remembers what our plan looks like, so I just want you to have that visual. And you remember that we had, you know, our goals. And then when you look in the middle at our action steps, that was something that obviously we said in five years, these are the things that we as a district want to sit here and proudly say that we've accomplished. And so I'm not going to go through each and every one of those. But as I, as we read through these as a cabinet, amazingly, we could connect this to things that we have done in the district. And the thing that I think we're most proud of with our strategic plan is, I go back to the Tom Barton days. We don't want to develop a plan and set it on a shelf. This is a document that lives and breathes in our district. There's not too many people that work in our district that would say, what's that? They don't know what that is. This is something we talk about? Buildings talk about this. Buildings use this to develop their buildings' plans as well. And so a few that I'd just like to highlight about the action steps were to provide ongoing opportunities to further engage parents and guardians and community members in student learning. We've definitely done that with the different opportunities we've offered for them to come into our buildings, the nights that we've had, and then the different things that our schools have started to do for families to engage them in, especially at the high schools. When we talk about post-graduation, what does that look like? How to do the FAFSA? You know, all those things that they're continually doing to engage our families. Prioritize renovation and construction projects to support student learning. Well, think about all the construction we've done in the last five and six years. I giggled at the senior graduation on Saturday, because they really talked about, we've never been in a school, been here without construction. I think it's been going on their entire four-year career. And so hopefully, this new upcoming freshman class is going to be able to say that they were actually able to park in both lots while they were at senior high school, you know? So this district has really done a lot of things to prioritize keeping our schools up to date, current. I look at what we've done at Eisenhower with the renovation of the air conditioning units. And there's just been lots of district projects that have happened that we can be very proud of. The last one, it says, enhance leadership development of administrators. I feel like that's something that we've really accomplished, because if you look at, look at our hiring practices in the past five to six years, we've really done a lot of hiring from within. From within, from people that have, you know, grown up in our district, have gone on to get leadership, we've tapped on the shoulder, or our teacher leaders. Our teacher leadership program has really helped us to develop leaders in our district that then can hopefully have them grow in our district and stay in our district, just in a different capacity. So I just really wanted to highlight a few of those as we talk about those action steps, because we do find those to be very important and lots of them of what we've done. The last one I want to point out is, if you look at the fifth one, it says, provide students with greater choice in their educational experience. And when I think about that one, that's probably the one that we've grown the most in the five to six years, because the Vertex initiative has really taken off. And students are really able to look at career pathways that are best for them. And so I think we're really proud. And we've enhanced our elective programming as well. So great things to see. The last column is the outcomes. And as you know, at the beginning of the school year, we looked at those outcomes and we said, okay, a lot of these changed during COVID. So then, we thought we were really smart and made new outcomes, right? And so we looked at those new outcomes on things that we can measure. And as we look at those measurements that we chose, many of these measurements, we don't have the data for as of today. You know, we still don't have ISAS data, our graduation rates. Those are things that we're still trying to get, you know, the state hasn't given us our final graduation rates. And those proficiency things with ISAS, we're still waiting for. So when we look at some that we can measure, we can kind of measure the college and career readiness and looking at how many students took a post-secondary exam. And so we were looking for that data earlier this week, and it changed all three days, depending on when we looked at it. So the plan that I would like to introduce to all of you is to say, as we look at these outcomes, would it be okay if I, once we got the ISAS data back, I bring that to you and ed programs so that we don't forget these outcomes? Because I think it's important that we can talk about them and see where we are at the end. But I hate to make predictions about something when we don't have the information yet. So if it's okay with you, Carrie and I will sit down, maybe tomorrow, and look at when we're going to get that information. And then we'll just bring that to you at ed programs and make sure that we check off all of this list. Would that be okay with all of you?
Yeah.
Yes.
Awesome, I appreciate that.
Where did these outcomes come from? Say more about that, would you?
So this was something that we developed after our first priority initiative report out this year. Yeah, we did that this year. And again, we weren't thinking that we wouldn't have ISAS data or graduation data. So when you see our new plan coming out, we're really trying to have our outcomes focus on data that we control at the district level.
And the derivation from the original five-year strategic plan to these came as a result of interruption from pandemic-related?
That is correct, because That is correct because many of these, like FAS tests, that was on our, that was what we were using for an assessment tool.
Right, sure.
And we don't do that anymore in the district post-COVID. And then, what else was? And then, actually, the graduation rates, that, the state has found that they made a clerical error with those as well. So, we really want to make sure that we have the data that's correct before we, you know, and that was what we found out after we did this, but...
My TBS morphed into ISAS.
Yeah.
That was a mid-five-year...
Yeah.
Would we have typically had that data by now? Or is this something we usually wouldn't have had by now?
No, we wouldn't have.
Okay.
Yeah. Which is why you're going to see in the next plan, we're going to do some, our outcomes are going to look a little differently.
Gotcha.
Okay? Because we do want to be able to close out the next plan in 2029. That sounds really weird to say, but in 2029, you know, when we're at this meeting and then we're ready for the next rollout. But I don't want to forget these things because they're very important, because these are goals that we've been working for, for the last six years. And so, we really want to make sure that we get that information to you as it comes in.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, here we go. So, lastly, to date, we really want to share with you the strategic plan that we are introducing that would start at the fall of 2024 and would conclude in the spring of 2029. And so, before you open it up, I see everybody opening, I just really need to give a shout out to everybody that was part of this plan. I mean, many people think that the plan is developed by like three or four people or just our district cabinet team, and that couldn't be anything farther from the truth. I feel like I'm really proud of the work that we did to get input from lots of people. And when we talk about lots of people, we talk about community members, we talk about families, we talk about staff, we did building leadership teams, we did our teacher leadership teams, we did district leadership teams, we did D-Silt, we did principals, we did, I mean, we did so many different user groups. And then, ultimately, the group sitting over there put this all together, you know? And then, once they put all the words and the assessments and things together, really, Mike and Tricia took it and made it the product that's in front of you. And so, I just can't thank everybody enough because, you know, I'm really excited about this because I feel like this, you know, this is the next five years. This is important work that we are committed to and look to accomplish as we move forward. And so, it's a really, really exciting time for the district and I'm just tickled about this. So, you know, Tricia knows I like orange, so she did a lot of orange and, you know, it's a happy color. So, anyways, I just...
It is the district color.
I, I know, I know. But I just really want to make sure that I, I give credit to where it's due. And then, also to you, because we worked through the strategic plan process, you know, since, after the holidays and once we got new board members on board. And so, I've appreciated your input, the things that you found as priorities, and then really given us feedback as we went back and forth to make sure that this really does say what we want it to say moving forward. And so, I love the pictures on this, on the front cover to really demonstrate our diversity that's in our district. You know, when we talk about what makes Dubuque Community Schools so great, you hear over and over, "It's our diversity, it's our opportunities that we have for kids." I mean, we really have opportunities for everyone. And so, that really came with our tagline that we're ready for you. And so, we know that it's about each and every student. And so, how do we meet the needs of each and every student? And that's really about the student. This morning at D-Silt, we shared kind of a rough draft and somebody's feedback was, "We need the word 'you' to be bold." And I'm like, "Oh, you're going to like it because it is." You know, because it is about our students. It's about them and what they're going to do while they're in our district, okay? So, go ahead and open. I know we're getting excited, so. If you look at the first two pages, again, this is material that, that you've already seen and read, but it really talks about, this is kind of the summary of where we're going. And took some great feedback from this group to make sure that we're talking about, you know, I think Anderson had said, "We need to talk about jobs of today and the ones that don't exist." You know, so those were things we added and really to emphasize the word "ready." We want our students to be ready for the jobs of today, ready to be critical thinkers, ready to live and lead with respect, empathy, character, and honesty, ready for, to strive for what seems impossible sometimes, and then, ready to forge their path with perseverance and resolve. So, I feel like this really summarizes a lot of things that we heard from a lot of different groups of individuals. And then, really talking about that, the learning, it is about test scores, it is totally about student achievement, but it goes farther than that. It's about your experiences while you're here that really, that make you grow up. You know, when I think about one of the speakers at graduation, they said, "You know, I feel like I've watched you grow up while you've been right in front of my eyes." And that's really what it's about. So, but these are all things that you've seen already. Then, when we flip to the next, this next page, this is the page that we highlight our four pillars that we agreed upon as we move forward. And so, again, we have student achievement and development. As you recall, the pillar of family, community engagement, that changed from community engagement to family and community because we know how important it is for our families to be engaged in their child's education. And then, we kept the employee excellence. Again, we tweaked some of that verbiage to really talk about that retention, that recruitment, and that development because we know that that's going to be critical as we get staff to join our district, that we want them to stay, we want them to develop, and we want them to hopefully move on to other opportunities within our district. And then, the last one is that effective resource management and making sure that we're maintaining our fiscal responsibility to our taxpayers and to our community. Then, the next part talks about those action steps. And one thing that I'd like to highlight, if I need to go back, is if you look at, can you go back to the first page? The one thing that we really talked about is, we know that this work, some of this work is more of one person than the other. But we also know that this work that's in the action steps is the work of everyone. If we're not all in on this work that we're putting out to achieve, then we're not going to be successful. And if you look at the strategic plan outline with the dot, and then you turn to the second page, that line continues. And so, then you turn to that third page we're on, you can see where that line comes through and it's really showing how all of this is interconnected through the plan. That's one of Tricia's little, you know, things that she does to play with my brain, but, but really showing how it all, we need all these things to make it work. And so, the action steps, again, we've already talked about those at one of our, our sessions. But it really just, you know, you can see that we have those action steps that are about student access and opportunity because we know that opportunity is one of the things that sets us apart from other educational districts in our area. And then, we need a community of support, not only from the people in this room, but from our families, from our, our business partners, from our, our workforce. We need, we need support from everybody to really get our students where they want to be at the end of this, at the end of their destination at graduation. So, then, we turn to the next page, and this is about successes. So, you can see that line comes up because, again, this is all part of the plan, it's all interconnected. And you can see that the measurements that we would let, that we're going to look at in the next five years is student attendance. That is something that we have access to pretty much at any time of the year that we can check to see where we are. And right now, currently, our percentage of students that are considered chronically absent, according to our, our beds report, is 33.44%. And so, we would like to decrease that at the end of our five years to 20%. That's a big goal, but we know that that's an important piece for us moving forward so that, because we know that we need to have students in their seats, in the building, learning and loving school, right? And so, that, we decided that really needed to be a focal point for us, and that'll be a way for us to report out throughout the five years so we can keep track of what we're doing and then also display the great things that we're doing as a district to help support our families with attendance. Academic growth, one of the things that we've done in the, you know, in the last plan was about proficiency. And when we talked with our building leadership teams, our principals, our teacher leaderships, our teacher leaders, they really said, "We need to have, we think we really want to have something that focuses on students' growth." Because every student has the, has the ability to grow each and every year, and we need to honor that and, and celebrate that because some, each person grows at a different rate, a different level. And so, looking at growth, we are going to use that through a universal screener right now that's called iReady that we use. And so, you can see where we are currently with how many students have succeeded to have typical growth. And typical growth is, on average, about one year of learning, okay? And so, when we look at where we are currently with our iReady scores after our spring testing, again, this is similar to like the MAP testing where we would, we test in the fall, winter, and spring. And our staff can use this tool to really look at, you know, different categories and say, "Okay, this," when we look at the category of, of reading, they're really struggling with vocabulary. So, then, this is a focus that we need for that student. And so, we set, we, we, we put on here where we are currently, you know, and in some of these areas, you know, we feel like we're doing okay, and in some of them, we know that we need to make some significant progress. And so, then, we set our goal for where we'd like to be after the five years. And so, this again will be a tool that we'll use to report out to you on a regular basis so you can see how we're doing on improving that growth in our, in our students through the assessment of iReady. The next piece is activity participation. And again, prior to COVID, this was a real focus, focal point for us. And then, you know, COVID happened and it was, it's been a little bit harder for us to get students back engaged. And one of our goals as a district is to really make sure that every student is connected in some way. So, how do we get each and every student in at least one or more activities? And we have students that are involved in like 10 or 15 things, you know? And they, they can hardly sleep because they're so involved in things. But then, we do have students that are involved in maybe one of their favorite things, and that's good because they make that connection to school, hopefully to an adult that hopefully gets them motivated to come to school each and every day. And so, you can see where we are currently with our middle and high schools as far as how many students are involved in at least one activity, and then where our goal is to be at the end of our five years. And you'll see that in high school, there is a less of a goal in middle school, but part of that is, you know, as students get to be juniors and seniors, sometimes they, they have jobs or, you know, other things develop. And so, we thought it was realistic to say that we want at least over half of our student body to be involved in at least one or more activity at the school level. And that includes clubs, includes LEAP, and includes athletics, fine arts, I mean, you name it, we want them involved in something, speech, all those things, okay? The next one is high school graduation intentions. And so, this is something that if state reported, that a graduate lists out what their intentions are post-graduation. And all of our students fill that out at graduation. And what we find, what we found is that we still have a chunk of our students that don't really have an intent, have a plan. They don't know what they're, what they're going to do next. And so, we, we think that that's a really important piece. And we talked about this a little bit earlier, but one of the things we're really trying to strive for is, how do we be transparent with families and kids about our pathways? What's out there? What's our concurrent class work, coursework look like? What, what does it look like to be, to take AP classes? What does it look like to get involved in CTE coursework? How do we get you an internship or go do a work-based experience? And so, we, we really want to focus on how we have those communications with family, even at a younger age. I would like to see at the end of five years, you know, what, when we look, look at that activity participation, what are we even doing all the way down in our elementary schools? How many of our elementary kids are in First Lego League? Are they doing orchestra, band, choir? Are they doing, you know, the, the elementary track meet, those types of things? Because I think that's important as well. But we really want all of our students, when they leave us, that they've got a plan. And what is that plan? And that that plan is what is they want. You know, it's not because we said, "This is what you should do." You've chosen that, that path for yourself. And so, and that's, again, a data point that we can get, you know, that we can do internally that will help us be able to report out to that at a reasonable time. And then, the last one, you know, graduation is our ultimate goal, right? We want to get as many students to the finish line as, as we, as we can. We'd love that to be 100% every single year. We would. And so, you can see where we are currently, where we were currently with the class of 2023, last year's class. And then, we're going to end that in the, with the class of 2028 so we can, because by that time, we'll have that data that we could share with you. And we're really hoping for great, big strides to improve our graduation rate in the district. And then, you can see, we also have our, our five-year graduation rate listed there as well. And then, lastly, as you turn the page and you can see the arrow that goes forward, this is about our district, you know? And this really talks about the work that you've all done to talk about, what is our mission? What is our vision? And then, what are the Board of Education values? And these were pieces that you worked through, through one of our retreat sessions. And I'm happy that we can highlight that in a way that our community knows what our values are, what the vision is of the district, and what our plans are to move forward. So, with that, I'm going to ask real quickly, Mike, is there anything that I forgot that you want to talk about?
I don't think so.
Oh, come on.
I could come up with something.
Or anybody in the group over there? Or do you think that we explained this well?
Okay, since you're putting me on the spot.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll just say that I think when we look at how we take the work that happened to create this plan and put it into this visual representation of it, I think the biggest takeaway that I would leave you with is that there was great intentionality in doing so and great intentionality in the focus on the individual student. And you'll see that represented in the photo choices, in the graphical elements. And our goal is always to make sure that the piece that we have is functional so that it can really serve as that roadmap. And so, we, we spent really most of the work of creating this document has been spent on the function of it to make sure that we can share this with our user groups, with our staff, with our partners, all of those groups, to be able to really outline clearly, this is where the district is headed so that this becomes the frame for us to make decisions and so that we can easily communicate that. And I would say just, I was on a call with our National Association earlier today, and I think that our strategic planning model is unique in pre-K-12 school districts because many districts still rely on plans that are bound, volume, you know, they're just really huge documents. And the challenge becomes being able to make those functional. And so, we still have all of that supporting work that happens as we implement through this plan, but that this as our plan really serves as that driver, as Amy said, to make sure that it stays alive, stays relevant, stays in front of people so that we can really drive the work.
And I think, you know, when, when we presented some of this to our district leadership team, it was stated by some of our principals that they feel like they're, they can see what they said in this plan and they can see how they will take this plan and make it work in their buildings, you know, which, that's an important piece of this because their buildings is where it happens. You know, they're the people that are doing the hardest work that's out there. And so, when they can say they can see themselves in this plan, I think that's... And so when they can say they can see themselves in this plan, I think that's a huge success for us. The other thing I'd like to add is, you know how we did tonight, we went through our priority initiatives? So we don't have those ready yet for the fall. So the plan will be, when we meet with you in August, we'll then give you the new priority initiatives for the upcoming school year, if that's okay?
Will be July or August, probably August.
Yeah. And then we'll still do our report outs in October, and February, and, and May, like we do currently. Will it look exactly the same as the report outs that we've done in the past? It might not, you know? I mean, it, it, it might look a little bit differently as we try to meet those action steps, but we, I just wanted you to know that we're still going to set priority initiatives each and every year, so that really focuses our work for that calendar year, and that we're still going to report out to the board and the community to show the progress that we're making on those priority initiatives.
I have a quick question. With graduation still fresh on my mind, I was delighted to learn about the degree of growth with the Dubuque Online School and the number of graduates. I don't know that that was talked about a whole lot in the strategic plan. Will you just give me a quick recap on where that fits into the current strategic plan?
So our Dubuque Online School is, is one of our building, it's one of our schools. So we, we call them DOS, you know, for short.
Yep.
So I would say that, I mean, they're a part of this plan, because, I mean, there's still their graduation rates in here. They still have to make goals and intentions for what they're going to do post-graduation. They can still do activities.
They can do activities and they can register.
Yep.
To join the online school. It's not like they're full, or there's a cap, like it's an area where we're actively growing still, is that right?
We have actively been growing our online school. I mean, last year, we were at about two-hundred-and-fifty-three, was that about right, students? And so we all, we have to make sure that we have capacity for staffing first. And so we're planning to maintain that same staffing level for next year. And then, as always, if students are entering the online school that have an IEP, we need to make sure that we have enough room with special ed caseloads and things like that.
That makes sense.
So there are times during the year that we have a waiting list for our Dubuque Online School, but as we know at, through trimesters and semesters, we often have times, kids go back and forth between school and online school. So I would say that I think they're in this plan all over the place, because they are considered a student, just like if I was at Washington Senior High School, Hampstead High School.
It's fully integrated.
It's fully integrated. And we've done some things that some of those students actually come into the building physically for some of our, of their coursework, especially like a CTE class or something. But then they also have classroom live Zooms that they do with the staff at DOS.
Okay.
And with their classmates and things like that, so. And they can still do internships, you know, all those things. They can take concurrent classes, all those same things as all the rest of our students.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah. Yeah, it was wonderful to see the amount of students that graduated at the DOS graduation, you know, to see the growth. I think we had three students walk the first year, and we had, what, like fifty walk on, yeah, or something. But it was just, it was wonderful to see that growth, and, and they were so happy to walk across that stage as well. So thanks for mentioning that.
I just want to compliment this document. I'm a visual person. And I really felt a lot more engaged with pictures, the colors, the wording, and I felt like we're focusing, which we always have focused on the students, but I really felt this time, you're focused on the diversity of our students, and making sure every one of our students reaches their capacity, or in their goals by the time they graduate. So this is awesome.
Yeah, I, I concur. I want to commend all of you for the work that went into this. I, in my professional life, have been through several strategic planning sessions in various places I've worked, and it's usually not something that's full of energy and excitement. And this is like completely different than what I've experienced in other realms. And I think that really speaks to the process that you've used, and the involvement of so many different folks in this, in this work, and really getting that feedback and keeping it focused on what's best for students. So, yeah, this is amazing.
Completely agree. I think this is a magnificent visual rendering of, of many voices. And the, the way you've synthesized all of that, first of all, to include that many voices, secondly, to synthesize it and then represent it visually, that's spectacular work. So Mike, Tricia, Amy, whoever all has been involved with that, great job. I have a couple of, I'll call them technical questions, if I, if I could ask them. On page, on the measures of success, a question under academic growth, where it talks about percentage of students reaching their annual typical growth goal on universal screener assessments. Amy, you said that a typical growth goal today is a year. Is it a year for all kids? Is it a year for some kids? Are we, will this be strictly based on one year's growth for the aggregate of kids in terms of reaching these percentages?
Yeah, Lisa, do you want to come up and talk a little bit about that in more detail? But we've been having lots of discussions about this, Nancy. It's been really interesting to hear more about the, yeah, but I'll let you.
So for every student that enters the school, we want them to get that growth of one full academic year. iReady has some unique measurements, but basically what it comes out to is when they are assessed in that screener, it shows where they are at, and then what would get them one year's growth, and then what would get them to stretch or accelerate their growth. So we are focusing on every student getting, reaching that typical growth, and that being their goal. Now, if we can get students to hit their stretch growth, and really, they will tell you, a certain percent can do that. But really, right now, we're focused on, you'll notice in this plan, like you said, we're looking at all students, all students getting that full year's growth within their ability from where they come in at to where that year ends. To accelerate growth, we got, we need to do more, but that looks different. So we're, as this goal, looking at all kids, all kids growing.
So all kids at one year's growth as the baseline measure?
Yes.
For progress?
Yes.
Thank you. And the same for entitled kids in their areas of disability, what are we looking at?
Well, what we, Brenda, do you want to answer?
Yeah, it would, it would be, it would be the same for all.
It would be the same for all. When we're talking about all kids, we want one year, because IEP students, their goals need to be rigorous to close that gap. We want at least a year's growth.
Yeah, or more if we can get it.
Exactly.
And when we see if we have a student that maybe is a year behind grade level, you know, even them making that, that growth, being a year behind, that's growth for that student, so we want to be able to represent that. And then on the flip side, if we have a student that's a year above grade level, we still want to make sure that we're enhancing their learning as well, so we want to see their typical growth as well.
Right.
You know? So it really, it really looks at both ends of the spectrum, and it makes it very personal to that student, you know? And then that also, having that as a goal will help our, or really keep our focus with our, our teaching staff, to be able to look at those individual students and see, what do they need to be able to reach that typical year growth?
Right. Which is the, the great thing about our universal screener right now, because it segments out where those skill deficits are, so we can really target those skills. Another thing that Brenda reminded me of, we do have students that take alternative assessment, that, again, our goal, and that's not separated out in here, but still, our goal always is every student one full year.
They don't, kids on alternate. Yeah. That's okay, that's okay. Do I need to push this?
No, you're good.
Students eligible for special education, if we look at kids that are assessed on the essential elements, so those would be kids in our significant disabilities populations. So we're talking about a very small percentage of students. Those students won't take this screener.
Sure.
Okay? They're assessed in other ways. Doesn't mean that we're not expecting a year's growth or more to close that achievement grab, gap, it just would not be within this data point.
So that, those students will not, the alternatives, alternative assessment kids will not be reflected in this data?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Yep.
Got it, thank you.
And Nancy, to that point, I think is maybe just a good general follow-up in, in terms of the measurement component of, of the plan, and we had many, many conversations about what indicators to include in this document. But we also recognize that there are hundreds of data points that feed into the work that happens at a level below this. It's just not practical to include them, so that this really is the high-level kind of dashboard indicators. But then in all of these areas, there are sub-data points, subgroups, extrapolated data points, alternate assessment, so many other pieces that in the course of our work, and the work of all of our teams, and then in the course of that reporting on a deeper level, you know, that there are so many data points that are within that, that drive us to that. But we've talked a lot about how those other data points, if we do it right, then drive these data points ultimately, so we target down and drive the data up.
Good. In the activity participation area, will, what we're looking at here again is aggregate data, of course. Will there be an intent to disaggregate the data, look at the subgroups that are not making the, the progress? It's one thing to say the, the bulk has made progress, and we've, we've achieved our goal or not, whatever. Where are we though, in terms of some of the, the individual subgroups going forward?
And I think that is, those are the pieces that we'll do more on a priority initiative basis.
Oh, sure.
You know, that we wanted to do it as a whole for the plan.
Of course.
But then each year, we'll be focusing on, you know, we'll look at where the needs are.
Yep.
And how do we have conversations? How do we get each and every? And, and then we'll be able to report out on those, the work that we're doing to try to get more students involved in an activity, and look at those subgroups and say, okay, you know, if we have students from, Marshallese students that are not getting involved in activity, what are we going to do to pull them in to something, so to get them engaged in a school activity?
Priority initiatives.
That would come through a priority initiative.
Great.
Yep. And I think you'll also see through priority initiatives, even the iReady data. I mean, there's so many charts and graphs that we can show, that I think will be very interesting for us to do in a priority initiative, so you can really see what the different growth is by all of our grade levels. You know? And so those will be some focal points that we'll bring in. Like I said, our priority initiatives might look a little bit different in the, in the future, because our focus here is a little bit different too. And so how can we show you that information and maybe say, okay, this was our fall data, now let's look at winter and spring and see where our growth was? And you'll be able to see that, and maybe by subgroups as well.
I so appreciate that this strategic plan's measures of success is a greater group of indicators than just student achievement. I think sometimes in the past, we've looked at it and said, well, it's all about student achievement. It is, but this recognizes it's not just about student achievement, and I really value all of these areas, and each of these areas being a part of the big picture of, of success for the plan. Thank you for that.
And I think too, that it's data that we control, so we're able to compare from year to year. You know, sometimes I think that's been challenging, if the state changes the way that they're assessing students, then it's more difficult for us as a district to know how, how students have changed if we're changing that measure. So I think it makes a lot of sense to use data that's ours, that's in our control, so we can actually track that over time.
Yeah, for sure. Absolutely, that's, that, we all agree. When we were looking at the outcomes from last time, it was like, we're making this so much harder on ourselves. You know? And not that those outcomes aren't important, and that work isn't important, but much easier when we own the, own the information.
Well, and it's more reflective of the big picture of
Yeah.
of the work and the task.
Yep. And it's, it's, it will give us more touch points. I mean, we can go in and look at this, you know, any time of the year, really. I mean, we could go in, in the winter and say, okay, how are we from fall to winter? What does that look like? Or, you know, and Joe can do the same thing with activities, you know? Well, we had this many kids participate in one season, what's, why are we dropping in the second season? Let's look at that.
You don't have to wait to get
You don't have to wait for something. We can, we can start doing that work immediately.
Great work here.
It's fantastic.
Yeah, it's very good. It's bright, it's energetic. I love the pictures on it. Brings us back to why we're all here for our diverse group of kids, and you guys have done a great job. And I love that you said too, that the principals in the building, the teachers, you know, they see themselves, how they can use this plan and push it forward at that level, which is, again, one of the most important tasks that we have, so.
Absolutely, it is.
Very good.
You know? Every one of our teachers in the elementary is given iReady, right? You know? And so they know that that's a priority for us, and, you know, all those things. So I appreciate you saying that, thanks.
Anything else, board members? Any other items? All right. Well, thank you all. We are adjourned.